Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, February 12th, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into close the meeting by order of the Mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmas?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have four gen items. The first is an update on the General Assembly, and Brandon's going to give that. And he has passed out some talking points. These things are really fresh. There was some very significant movement today on transportation funding, and Brandon's going to cover that.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Yes, a highlight, the handout just sort of highlights some recent actions, and we put in bold type those things that have occurred even yesterday and today. Just to recap a bit, this is a short session of the Assembly, and we're really closing into the final day, as we're only about 10 days away from the end of the regular session, and then there will be a veto session in April, as needed. As Mr. Rowe mentioned, there's been several changes just within the last couple of days. The budget bills are now in a conformed format. The House Budget Bill, which is HB 1500, was conformed to the Senate Bill, SB 800. And as of the last report, and this is as of today, some of these things were still pouring through to see, you know, what is in it. But the aid to the Commonwealth piece is in there. In other words, that's going to remove the requirement of localities to send money back to the state.
Which will save us about a million bucks? Is that what it is? Eight to the Commonwealth, about nine hundred thousand to a million?
Yes, sir. Correct. That's correct.
That's right.
The 2% increase for teacher salaries that Dr. Stuckwich talked about last night is in both versions, although one would, as he mentioned, would be funding for half a year only. The impact on that is going to be significant. The VML report indicates it's about $600,000 impact, $600,000 impact on Portsmouth. As you remember, Dr. Stuckwich said last night, he thought it would be about a $1.1 million impact.
There goes our million that we just saved.
Yeah. It does have a local impact. The K-12 education, both houses have about $89 million in additional funding in their versions. There was a new addition that we're not sure where it is in the version as of today, but it would supplement the Portsmouth Public Libraries to the tune of about $250,000 for computers and equipment. So we need to find out the current status of that. But as of last week, that was still in the versions of the bills, the budget bills. Medicaid expansion, both houses have some version of Medicaid expansion, but with some fairly stringent cost control conditions. And again, that's another one we need to dig in a little deeper to see where it is in the conformed bills as they are today. The big change that happened today, as Mr. Rowe mentioned, was in the transportation funding bill. These got consolidated into Representative Delegate Howell's HB 2313. As you recall, going into the Senate Finance Committee, where it was heard this morning, this was essentially the Governor's proposal that eliminated fuel taxes, raised registration fees, and increased the state sales tax by eight tenths of a penny, and that would go into the transportation fund. It got fairly dramatically changed in the version that came out of the Finance Committee this morning on a nine to six vote. It actually increased the gas tax by five cents a gallon to 22 cents a gallon, and indexed it on a producer price index. So going forward, it would increase as that index increased. It also added 1% sales tax to fuels, on wholesale fuels. So that element that wasn't in it, you know, that was proposed by the Governor to come out completely, they not only put it back in, they added to it. And they also took the Governor's proposal to designate some sales tax that would come from the federal legislation to enact the Marketplace Equity Act. And if that's not enacted by July of next year, then this bill provides for a statewide sales tax on fuels to increase by another one cent. It also increased the sales tax, instead of by eight tenths of a cent, as the Governor proposed, to half of one cent. So that half cent would go to the transportation funding. It also increased registration fees for vehicles and weight-based registration fees. It gives the local governing body the option to increase a local sales tax of up to 1% for transportation infrastructure. And it also restricted tolls on existing highways without prior approval of the General Assembly. So this is the version that's come out of Senate Finance, and it will be on the Senate floor going forward, which is, you know, quite a change from what went in there this morning.
Quite a change, quite a positive change, in my view.
Yeah, these tolls, too.
Then on the issues specific to Portsmouth, the ones that were in our legislative package, our charter changes are moving forward without any opposition through the respective houses. The ports bill, ultimately, the final bill is Wagner's Senate Bill 1305, and it prevents accepting any future unsolicited proposals under PPTA for operation and ownership. This is, as noted on there, this will be in the House Transportation Agenda coming up later this week. Related to that, there was a VPA hearing last week, and over at Nauticus, and Councilman Simmons was there and spoke along with about 30 other folks at the public hearing, and they were all urging the port authority to reject unsolicited proposals. There were lots of good reasons for doing that, and Councilman Simmons emphasized that by accepting unsolicited proposals, we really don't control our destiny, or the port authority doesn't control its destiny. The better means is to draft your own specifications and issue an RFP so you get what you want in terms of operation and ownership of the port. But other speakers emphasized that the ports are doing well financially in spite of the current economic conditions, and there's just not enough history, given the current operation and all the intermodal transportation changes that are in the works now, to say it's time to change horses midstream. So let's give this one a chance. So that was a message they got loud to the audience, and we certainly hope the port authority ultimately rejects those unsolicited proposals. In terms of PPTA amendments, these were watered down considerably into SB 977 from their original version. You recall, the original versions that we went to Richmond and spoke in support of included such things as requiring local approval prior to accepting unsolicited proposals, General Assembly approval, would require environmental impact studies, and would have prohibited non-compete and damage clauses. But ultimately, what version came out didn't include any of that. It simply requires 120 days to pass before accepting competing proposals, and also provides for some public comment opportunities. So this is, this was, this version was passed unanimously in the House Transportation Subcommittee this afternoon, and it'll head to the House floor shortly. The Voting Rights Restoration Bill, this was Senator Lucas's SJ 266, would have restored rights for persons convicted of nonviolent felonies. This was effectively killed yesterday in the House Privileges and Elections Committee because they failed to act on it.
That's a shame.
That's a shame. That had a lot of momentum a week ago, in one week.
And the Governor supported it and came out with a statement yesterday saying he was disappointed in that.
As a matter of fact, I was in her office in Richmond, and she shared a comment about Senator Yvonne Miller and how she fought for years to push this, and how sad it is that she's passed on, and now we're going to finally get it through. And I think she made that comment after talking to the Governor.
What's the committee's concern, those in opposition?
I don't know. That was just today, so I just got a quick.
Cut off the press.
Excuse me, that was yesterday, but I got a quick note from Cherry as to when it happened, but I couldn't tell you what their comments were. Senator Lucas Toll Mitigation Study, which is a Senate study, was passed by the Senate, and that would have the Finance Committee study ways to mitigate the impact of tolls on Virginia's disadvantaged citizens. We had some funding requests for the Children's Museum, and as of the latest report, that was not included in either budget version, so that apparently will not come out. And finally, Senator Lucas and Delegate James both submitted economic growth sharing agreement bills, and that would facilitate localities in the Port of Virginia Economic and Infrastructure Development Zone to enter into voluntary economic growth sharing agreements without the review of the Virginia Commission on Local Government. Those were passed in the opposite houses today, so that's going to move forward. The other attachment that I have there is a bill that came out with an action call today. This is a recommendation from VML, as well as Dr. Stuckwich, to oppose this, these two bills that are being considered, one is HB 2096 and SB 1324, would transfer the management of schools that have been denied accreditation into a new statewide school division. And if this legislation were in effect this year, there are currently four schools that have been denied accreditation, and they would have gone under this new state school division. It takes a radical approach to funding, and it would require the transfer of local per pupil funding from the school division to this new statewide division, and the per pupil funding would include the required local funding and the discretionary local funding. So this is a sort of a revolutionary change in funding for local education and takes some control away from the school board. And so the VML position is to oppose it, and we just want to make you aware of it. We will support the VML position in opposition to that. That's a quick summary of updated legislation. Happy to answer your questions.
How about funding for the Sports Hall of Fame? Was anything?
I'm not aware of where that is, and if it's still in there, I'm sorry, I can't answer.
We'll check on that. Okay, thanks.
I think I spoke with Senator Lucas about that, and she said it was tucked away under some category that she didn't want to have its online item and name because of what happened the last time around. But I talked about that and the Children's Museum, and it was oddly, we met Delegate Joanna at the elevator, and he didn't know a whole lot about the 125,000 that was being pushed in for the Children's Museum, so we knew right away that something was in trouble with him not knowing, because he's one of the heavies there, he's one of the coffrees, and when he doesn't know about it, then either he's playing possum or it ain't there. So, you know, and we respect him a great deal, so, yes, sir.
And that's consistent with the state policy now, the General Assembly's policy, not to fund non-state agencies. They're not sending money to any agency that's not a state agency. On the port matter, the message has been taken to place. Mayor Wright took it to the General Assembly, that the best thing to do is to reject the existing proposals. Let the port authority, if they want to change the way the port is operated, let them come up with the specifications and put it out for the bid process. That same message was taken by Councilwoman Simmons to the public hearing last week. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
The next item is the report that's titled Keeping of Chickens Within the City. It's this report. A couple of council meetings ago, you were asked by citizens to consider the possibility of amending the city code to allow for the keeping of chickens within the city. Urban chickens is the term of art. You ask us to study the matter and to bring back a recommendation. Fred's going to give you a briefing, but I'm going to reveal the point. We recommend that you amend the city code, the zoning ordinance, and start the process with the adoption of a resolution. The amendment would be to allow the keeping of chickens, hens, under certain conditions. Fred?
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of council. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. As Mr. Rowe indicated, I'm providing you a briefing or an update on the keeping of chickens in urban settings, urban chickens. A little regulatory history, and it's been back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Initially, with the 1961 ordinance, you were allowed to keep chickens on lots 7,500 square feet and greater, one chicken for every 100 square feet. So if you had a lot 7,500 square feet, you could keep 75 chickens. I guess because of that, in 1973, chickens were banned. 1988 provisions allowed the keeping of chickens at a rate of one per thousand or 2,000 square feet, depending on the specific voting in single-family residential areas. Then again, in 2010, we said no. And I think there's a couple of good reasons for that. We were proposing more dense districts than had been previously provided. And again, that same issue that occurred in 1961, we recognized in 2010. Some of our lots have a large amount of land, but that land is either in marsh or in wetlands or underwater. So you typically could have a lot that has three acres, 10,000 square feet buildable, and all of a sudden, you're looking at the potential of keeping several hundred chickens under the old ordinance. Today, there's a growing trend among individuals to produce their own food, either the gardens or the chickens, in some places, it's goats and bees. We're looking at chickens tonight only. We don't mess with the gardens. Localities throughout the country have been adopting this, and it's, as you can see, some fairly significant localities have already moved ahead with the adoption of chickens. If you bring it back to Virginia, VML looked at about 28 localities, ranging from Arlington, Petersburg, and the like, and most of them, only one had a specific ban against chickens. Most of them had limitations or restrictions, ranging from one acre a size minimum down to about 3,000 square feet.
And the key word here is, those are the localities that responded to the VML survey. There are more than just one that banned chickens, but in this particular survey.
Yes, sir.
28 for, one against.
Now, one of the things we looked at, and really, why are people saying no to the chickens, and what are the reasons? And I think there's two main areas. First would be a nuisance issue. Odor, the problems associated with the chickens, noise and pest. The small chickens that are well-maintained, they are not observing the problem with odors. This is not a large chicken facility that you would see on the eastern shore or in Rockingham County, Virginia, in those areas. These are the small four to six chickens that we were looking at, are not causing a problem with the odor. Noise, if you have a rooster, you have a problem, and they do not stop crowing when the sun comes up. They crow all day long. So they're part of the problem, the chickens aren't, so we're looking at not having the roosters. Pest, and it's interesting, they actually eat insects, so they are getting rid of some of the pest, but if you do not maintain the property, and you leave the feed out, and you don't take care of everything, then you would be attracting anything from your rats, to your mice, the raccoons, and hossoms. The other main issue is health and welfare. Public health. We've talked with our health department, they have actually endorsed the recommendation that you have before you. They said they think it would be a good program to have to help identify where they're at, so if there are problems, we could be looking at them regularly. The issues that could be solved mainly are dealing with hygiene, and if you don't take care of it, actually, the chickens stop laying eggs. So if you don't keep a clean coop, they stop laying eggs, so then your idea is going to be gone. Water quality, everywhere we've looked, we've seen that six chickens produce about the same amount of waste as an average-sized dog. We allow four dogs, so, you know, I think that's pretty much a non-issue. And we could not find anything on property value indicating whether there was an increase, decrease, anything documented. There are people that are very polarized one way or the other, but as far as documented cases or discussions, we've not found that at this time. We're showing you a couple of the modern coops. One on the corner here, bottom, is pretty much homemade. The top is one that's ordered online. You can go buy it on Google and set it up. After reviewing the ordinance, we feel like we really need to go back to the 1988 ordinance, but there needs to be some changes. The 15-foot setback from the property line, where the chickens are kept, we think that's a valid number. It's right in range with those other localities we've looked at. Limit the number of chickens permitted, one to 1,000 square feet, 2,000, and then consider them accessories, so they can't be in the front yard, they've got to be in the rear part of the property. We're also feeling that you need to add something. Again, no specifically not allow them. Minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, and then no more than six hens per lot. So we would get away from that thing where if you have a lot of land underwater, you can keep hundreds. Here, maximum six. A lot of people saying, well, six be enough? Well, if a hen averages 250 eggs a year, and you have six of them, you're getting 1,500 eggs for a family of four. I think that's more than enough eggs for you to take care and provide for your family. Food, manure, waste, whatever needs to be properly disposed of, and again, only in the rear yard, and then the sale would be prohibited.
Well, on the sale of eggs being prohibited, I'm curious as to why that.
Well, we don't want this to turn into a vision where all of a sudden, they're encouraged to have more than the six. If you have six, you're going to be giving them to your neighbors. Just that many that are going to be produced. But we feel like that the sale of the eggs would be something that would be not permissible with an accessory use.
So if your next-door neighbor wants to buy a dozen eggs, they're in violation of the law?
Technically, yes, sir. You know, but if they come over and say, hey, I'll give you.
But they can give you a tip for giving them to them.
Yep.
And again, this is, you know.
I was just curious, I didn't know whether there's a health reason that the eggs had been caddled or anything like that.
There's some other reasons like that. We don't know how long the eggs have been out, the conditions again with the eggs. We're saying if you're taking them for your family, fine, but we didn't want to get into that issue of having to provide some safety or some.
I was just curious.
Review process. If you process the resolution in a favorable manner tonight to allow the Planning Commission to review this and provide a recommendation to you, then we would prepare the amendment, take it to the Planning Commission, they would review it and bring it back to you. If you do that tonight, then we feel confident, our schedule now calls for this item to be on the April Planning Commission meeting and coming back before City Council in the May timeframe. So that would allow individuals, if they wanted to begin building or keeping something, and this was favorably passed, that they had the summer months to prepare the coops, get the permits, and begin, you know, their keeping of urban chickens. Are there any questions?
They still have to have a permit to do this.
The permit, there's no calls for the permit, it's the zoning certificate. They would come in, we would need to see where they're keeping the coop on the lot to make certain that it's not going to be right up against their neighbor's bed, window, or whatever. Excuse me, but we would, you know, review that, help them get that reviewed using aerial photographs, sign off, and then they would move ahead.
Do we have any idea how many people are housing hens now?
No, sir.
Under the old grandfather clause?
We do not. Talking with the health department, talking with, I would say, vendors, maybe of food, the chicken feed, you may have as many as 30 or 40 that they know of in the area. It could be even more. But like I said, there's no documented number on that.
Fred, would this be, wouldn't someone want to have a coop? Would they be coming before the Plan Commission, or just something would be done administratively? Because my question, I was asking, would their neighbors be notified that your neighbors plan on putting up a chicken coop, and do you have any comment on it? It wouldn't be any of that?
Right now, we're planning, none of that would be, same as if you came in and wanted to build a garage, you'd come in and get a zoning certificate, and it's the same, you don't ask if you get a dog or if you get a cat.
No sign would go up?
No, sir. We feel like that the keeping of the chicken would be similar to the keeping of any other domestic or animal.
Well, if you build a coop, there's a difference between a coop and keeping a cat. I mean, it's not apples and apples.
That's the reason we need to have the public hearing, to have this vetted, to bring this material in. You know, we've got some staff ideas and some staff review, but we need the public's input on this.
One of the things that's right interesting, when Cavalier Manor was annexed with Norfolk County, and I'm not telling my age, but back during that time, there were chicken coops in the classrooms, out in the old Cavalier Manor schools and all. They were pets in the classroom, and someone told me about that. I didn't live through it, but someone told me about the children things and the eggs and things. And it was a project, because we did a unit on farm animals and how helpful they were. And we kept those in a little area of sticks, you know, in classrooms, and we made it a teaching lesson. Children loved it. They were pets, they had names, just like the students did. And I'm not telling my age.
I'm not going to propose this going to Planning Commission, but I do think there ought to be some mechanism that if your next-door neighbors get ready to build a chicken coop, you ought to know, because it's not like putting a cat door in your back door and the cat can run in and out. It's a little bit different. So.
So we can take it on the vice man.
The vice man.
Yes, sir.
Any issues with PETA? That y'all could see what, you know, I mean.
I haven't talked to them.
Tattering hens, unless you fry one.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Anybody else?
Ladies and gentlemen, if it's the consensus in here, then I recommend that you place this under council.
Item submitted by council.
Very good. I knew that.
Thank you very much. We'll take care of it.
And again, these are very good comments, and I think that's a very valid point about notifying the neighbors.
Yeah, Mitch, if we take his concern back, because I'm sure that may show up again.
The next item we have is a briefing on our utility project downtown. As you know, this project is underway. It's always good to be refreshed on the history that brought us to this point. What we're doing today, what lies ahead. This is a big investment, and the benefits are really going to be many for our utility system downtown. And so Brian Foster?
And so, Brian Foster?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Pleasure to be before you this evening to discuss our downtown utility project. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce our assistant director, who I'm not sure most of you may know, but this is Erin Tremier. Erin joined our team back in November of 2011. She's a registered professional engineer in both Virginia and North Carolina. She has her degree from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute in New York. And in addition to utility, she has a strong background in geotechnical engineering and project management. So, she is our project manager for this project. She's doing a great job, and she's going to be helping me with the presentation this evening.
I didn't hear Old Dominion in there anywhere. Sorry.
Basically, what we're here tonight to talk about is we're going to update you on the construction progress on quadrant one of our downtown utility plan. Just again, to revisit some of the history, back in 2007, we completed a downtown master utility plan and then updated it with some additional information in 2008. The entire downtown area, we divided into four quadrants for evaluation. We looked at such things as we did a condition assessment. We're talking about the age, the material, the degradation of the pipe material. The hydraulic modeling, basically, we're looking at the capacity of the system to deliver the sufficient volume that's required based on our demand. And then the impacts of future development, where, based on our redevelopment plans, where development may occur, making sure that we have increased capacity and service available to those areas. So, this is from the study. This is the, basically, I mentioned the four quadrants. Our current project is here in quadrant one. Basically, goes from Washington Street all the way over to Water Street. From High Street down next to the interstate is the study area. Now, High Street is not actually in the project area. That work was done when High Street was redeveloped back in the 80s. So, that work is complete. But here in quadrant two, the Renaissance Hotel is here in that area. Area three is the bulk of Old Town, including, and it does cross Effingham Street, the other side of Effingham. And then down here in quadrant four is the remainder, including a section of High Street beyond Effingham. And that was the focus area where we were going to see our redevelopment and where the most need is. So, why was the project needed in the study? Basically, the three points here outline that the redevelopment that we want to do with, if you think about, for example, the Desking site, there's no water service currently. When we redevelop that, that'll be a big water user. Same thing with the Holiday Inn site. You've got some vacant land that's not actually using utilities. When redevelopment, there'll be a big utility demand. We are estimating the water demand probably will double in the next 25 years once all of these redevelopment initiatives come to fruition. Our existing system is functional. Keep in mind, the water system in Portsmouth actually dates back to the 1890s. That's over 100 years ago. We still have facilities in use that date back to that timeframe. The average age downtown of our facilities is over 60 years old. Utility infrastructure typically useful lifespan is 50 to 75 years. A third of what's downtown, or more than a third of what's downtown, more than 100 years old. So, it's certainly well beyond its useful life. It doesn't meet today's design standards, and it's not capable of the increased flows that we'll need to service downtown. So, in short, this really much sums it up. It's worn out. It needs to be replaced. We need to be able to have additional capacity to provide for our development and redevelopment The scope of the project, there's basically two major components. There's a sanitary sewer pump station, and then there's the replacement or rehabilitation of all the water sewer and storm drain lines in the project area. The pump station is required, of course. That's, if you don't know where that is, at the corner of County and Washington Street is where that's under construction now. Gravity, of course, or, excuse me, sewer flows downhill by gravity. Portsmouth is very flat, so we can only go so far. You've got to be able to pump it to keep it going to eventually get to HRSD and to the treatment plant. So, this new pump station is going to give us increased capacity to the sewer system. It's also going to relieve flow from our pump station on Race Street, which was put in service in the 1920s. The original cost estimate in the master plan for this project was 14.2 million. But the bid price that we received for these two items was 11.9 million. So, even though we're almost six years when the study was first done, we're still under the estimate. Well, I guess one of the benefits that we have been realizing in utilities with all of our capital work is that the economy has made construction pricing very favorable. So, we're able to really stretch, excuse me, stretch our dollars. The, like I said, the pump station's at Washington County. It started in May of 2012. That's $2.1 million contract. We expect that to be complete and put into service this summer. The replacement and rehabilitation of all the water sewer, it's a 16-block area. They've just now started here this past month in January, and that's going to take about two years. And so, by the end of 2014, all of the lines will be complete. The... I lost my place. It's about 70 acres, the project area size. There's 12 streets. There's about three miles of roadway in the project area, which is here, you can see, defined. It's everywhere that's in red. So, as you can see, here's High Street. So, on the side streets, we approach the intersection, but we're not actually in High Street. Again, that project was already done. We are, here's your pump station site right here at County and Washington Street. And the, we are, the force main out of the pump station is coming down to connect to HRSD and Effingham Street. This is where HRSD's main is that we'll be connecting to. So, this one block here is technically in quadrant four from the study, but we need to go ahead and do the work in this one block in order to make all of this work hydraulically. As far as the phasing of construction, we're doing this in phases, and that's so we can limit the impact to our property owners and the traffic flow. So, our phasing limits to minimize the amount of time in each area and disruption. And so, I'm going to now turn it over to Erin, and she's going to talk about how the project is phased and the type of construction taking place.
Good evening. As Brian previously mentioned, minimizing impact to residents and businesses was key in the planning and design of this project. As you can see on the overhead in this map, we've broken it down into 15 phases. Most phases are a duration of two to four months. There are two phases, phases 12, just up here, and phases 14, which are a longer duration, about five to seven months. But within those areas, they're broken down into sub-projects that are of a duration of about two to three months. Within each phase, the contractor is required to perform all of the work in that area before he's allowed to move on to the next phase. This will include the installation and rehabilitation of the water lines, the gravity sewer, the force main, any storm drain improvements, water lines and sewer laterals, the rehabilitation of the curb that goes along with that installation, also the replacement of curb and gutter throughout most of the project area, and new pavement within that particular phase. So, once we're done, we're done. We're not going to come back and disrupt your service and your life, hopefully. The way this is set up, there's a main line, this is where the pump station is. There's a main gravity line that runs down County Street, down Court, and then back over Columbia to an existing suction well that's located right here in front of City Hall. This is a deep line, and this is going to be, there's two parallel tracks for the phases. There's going to be this main track that comes down here that the contractor will work on. And in association with that, to minimize the duration of the overall project, he's going to be allowed to work on side streets coming into that main line. However, if he's working right here in phase one, he's not going to be able to work in phase 12. We're not allowing them to shut down two main corridors of traffic at a certain time.
How many contractors are you planning to have in...
One contractor.
One? And he's going to have different teams?
And the way it's set up, he can have multiple crews out there. He can have multiple crews in a phase. The way he's got it right now, he's got a deep crew, a deep line crew, who's working on the gravity and force main that goes out to Effingham and ties into the pump station. And then he's got a shallower crew that's working on the working phase one.
Obviously, maintenance and traffic is a big deal with a project of this magnitude. So, as Erin said...
Maintenance, traffic, and disruption.
It's very much disruption. I mean, we admit that right up front. But we are also working very hard and very diligently to minimize that disruption as best we can and being responsive to our citizens and businesses. When a project is, or a phase is under construction, that block or blocks will be completely closed to traffic. As she mentioned, it's a very deep construction. Most of the roads are very narrow, and it's just physically not possible to maintain traffic on those corridors.
As far as the businesses downtown, is there anything in place or something we can look at far as maybe helping suspend their either property tax or sales tax to pay in the city? Because some of these...
Something for their losses?
Yeah. Is that, I mean, I got two calls a day about businesses saying, "Look, we're going to be shut down in front of our doors for two months. What are we supposed to do?" And I'm like, "Well, I'll bring it up tonight." So, if they already called today...
I got the same.
When we get to the seven-month one, a really good call.
I'd have studied that and I'll give...
I mean, honestly, some, I mean, like Artisan Bakery right now. I went there twice this weekend, and I took my bike one time, parked a block away another time. And I mean, I know my way around downtown, and I drove around a lot on Sunday morning trying to figure out how to get there.
And I went there too on Saturday. And it is a bear. Let us study that.
Especially if we come in under budget and, you know, I think that's a little bit of money for us, and it's a lot of money for them.
How many businesses are impacted?
We're going to get them all.
Get them all.
All, you know, how many? Well, there are 250 parcels of land. And let us...
That includes residential, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, let us find if there's a way to do it.
Right.
Second, what the water magnitude is and what it might cost. I mean, just thinking out loud, it might be that we give free water service for a month or something like that, or sewer.
We need to do an impact analysis and get the water magnitude and then go from there. Because you don't want to start opening the floodgates and...
Especially the restaurants, the restaurants, once the water is disrupted or the sewage, the health department closes them down. They cannot be open.
Right. And those are the kinds of things, like, and we've dealt with that before, is we'll do night, we'll do night work when they're closed, as far as if we've got to shut their water off or switch their service over. We will do things like that at night to minimize that. Because like I said, we know this is disruptive. We're not ducking that at all. It's just a situation, this is, if you think about it, this infrastructure in a lot of these places has been there for 100 years.
Pay me now or pay me later?
The mag...
I mean, we've got to do it.
This is probably the largest utility project in Portsmouth in a generation in terms of the scope and size of it. Very much needed. And the lasting benefit, it will benefit all of these businesses and residents in the downtown area. So, we recognize there's a very much a short-term inconvenience, but there should be a long-term benefit.
You just got to make sure they last.
I understand. I understand.
Do it.
But we've been, we've tried to be very responsive. And I think since you raised the issue, I'm going to, we're going to...
Fast forward.
Well, we're going to just let you know, let Erin tell you what, specifically with artisans, we've been working with them a long time. And they're very, they're particularly affected, unfortunately, because they're both right across the street from the pump station, and they're in this first phase of line work. So, they've been having to deal with it a little bit longer than what other businesses will likely see. But I'd just like for her just to mention how long we've been working with them and the things that we've been doing to try and be responsive.
Separate from the outreach program we had associated with the pump station, with the residents and artisans, we started this process back in August, or actually, July last summer. We held an open house at the Court Street Library, sent out a newsletter, invited everybody to come in. We did a presentation, we had a slideshow, and had some boards out. Whoever came in, they got to, you know, take a look, ask questions, give feedback. Artisans was one of the businesses that came in to that open house. In response to that, I went and met with them the next day because the way we had the phase line set up initially, it was almost right on their property. So, they asked us to move it down so that we weren't right in front of their door the whole time. Seems like a very easy thing to just move the line, but it actually was a lot of engineering behind it because we've got tie-ins and connections with the water and sewer and having old systems tied to new systems. But, you know, we understand that we're impacting them. We also met with the Old Town Business Association in August, gave the same presentation, met with a lot of the business owners up on High Street, although our project's not there. Disrupting main traffic flow and parking will impact them. We've also, I think most of you received the frequently asked questions sheet. We sent that out. We've sent out newsletters updating all of businesses and residents, when we're going to be in your area, what is going to occur. In December, Andy Snyder, who's the project engineer for this for Draper Aiden, and myself, did a segment for Port TV. All of these newsletters and everything, they're online, they're on our website online. We've had individual meetings, not only with artisans, but several other businesses, the Commodore Theater, the museum, the credit union. I mean, everybody's got their own issues, where deliveries are coming in, where are we going to park? You mentioned the tax credit. I assume most of you have read the article in the current this past weekend. In association with that article, I went out and met with artisans again last Thursday and again today. In association with that article, the contractor, he was using part of this area as a lay-down because this intersection's blocked, you can't do through traffic. He's removed all of his onsite materials. He's being constrained to just his work area. He's moved everything to a lay-down yard off-site. The meters in this area were removed so that the clients for these businesses have free parking. There's new signs out there that say "business parking," kind of lead you to where you can park and get to these locations on the sidewalks. Met with artisans again this morning. They seemed happy. They saw an increase in their business over the weekend with some of these adjustments that we've made.
You said you saw about 30 people in there Saturday when you went?
I saw about half the tables were full when I went in there.
I rode through there this weekend. I didn't see any cars. I didn't know they couldn't park in any of that area. I didn't go inside because I thought he may want to pepper me up with some comments. So, I stayed afar. But you rode your bike in there, good girl.
Healthy Portsmouth.
Healthy Portsmouth, that's right.
And then I had a croissant.
Real good.
How long is this project supposed to last?
The entire project is two years approximately.
All four phases?
Oh, no, this is just for the, this area is quadrant one. This is a two-year project.
Okay, quadrant one's two years.
Right. So, we wanted to just to mention that to you. But like I said, the traffic, you know, was certainly an issue. We're doing our best to make sure that people know where they can and can't go and direct people. And we're working to improve the signage. That was mentioned in the article as well. Because again, we're doing our best to be responsive within the context of such a large construction project.
Actually, I just want to add one more thing. It hasn't just been outreach with the residents and the business owners in downtown. We've also spent a great deal of time meeting with all of the other utilities. And as a result of that, Columbia Gas has a full-time representative on-site.
That's good.
So that when... So that when we, I mean, in an area where we've had rehabilitation and there are several unknown factors out here, as much research as we've done, we're going to come up to utilities and we don't know if they're abandoned. We don't, we didn't expect them to be there. So to mitigate that impact, we've worked very closely with all of these utilities so that we can find the problem and-
So Columbia Gas has a liaison person right there on-site to be able to-
That's good.
That's very good.
Do we have an inspector on-site by any chance?
Full-time inspector.
Full-time, right?
Full-time resident inspector.
I think one of the key things is making sure the total residents in the city is kept abreast of what the progress is going on there because they are the ones who spend the money-
Sure.
-in the downtown area.
That newsletter and those frequently asked questions was a big hit.
They're going to have to. That's going to help them all the way. And they need to have an overview of what is going on. That's why these presentations are so important.
Well, and in addition, we put all of this presentation on a window front in High Street from July of last year to January of this year. So people who come downtown know about the project.
Again, just so, so we'll try and quickly wrap up. The working hours, generally 7:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. However, we are, again, to try and minimize disruption and get this project done as fast as feasible. There are areas, and on Aaron's, the board next to Aaron, the areas in green are the areas that might have extended hours that are very much commercial in nature, not where our residents, where people are living, that might have extended nighttime hours. And then there'll even be some 24-hour periods. The connection on Effingham Street where we're connecting to HRT Force Main, that'll be 24 hours on a weekend because they've got to, they're going to start on Friday night and be done. Pavement put back before rush hour on Monday morning. In order to, you know, we recognize the impact on that and to keep that going.
Are there any safety issues involved over the weekend when they're not working?
They have, their site is, I mean, is secure as far as they cover up their work area and as far as they're not leaving any open trenches or anything like that.
And they've got signage out there to keep traffic from going.
They put metal plates over a lot of the holes, one-inch-thick plate that can-
Okay.
Brian, the streets, obviously, there's going to be a lot of streets torn up.
Right.
Explain how the streets are going to look afterwards. Is it going to just be patches?
No.
Or is it going to be completely repaved?
Completely repaved. And in most, most of the streets, it's going to be all-new curb and gutter. The streets are going to get torn up. And there'll be, now, there's a couple of areas where there's existing concrete curb that we won't be disturbing, that does not need to be replaced. But for all intents and purposes, it's going to be new curb and gutter throughout. Curb-to-curb, full-width pavement will be done on every street. So it'll be brand-new streets, brand-new striping. It will look as good as we can make it once it's done. So again, there'll be inconvenience, it will look terrible. But really, the goal is when we're done, we move out of there. It looks nice, it functions like it's supposed to. We've only bothered you one time and we've moved on to the, we've moved on to the next block.
Can we, can we look at, when they done one of the sections and they move on, the truck traffic stays going forward instead of backwards to new pavement?
I'm sorry, I said that again.
You know, like when you finish one of the sections?
Right.
You've got brand-new asphalt. And I mean, I know a little bit about the trucks. Usually, they load the trucks a little heavier coming out of that because it's going to be blue mud and wet material. If we can keep the traffic going the way we're working versus going over the new-
The contractor?
Yeah.
Yes, he will do that.
And we did the same thing in Prentice Park. When we were redoing those roads on that project a couple of years ago, once they repaved the construction, traffic had to stay off of it. We'll be doing the same thing.
And pay it off too because it looks good.
Yes.
You know, Brian, since this is such a large project, and I know you probably put RFQ as well as RFP out, were there any Portsmouth companies that participated in that process? Or were there any qualified to participate? Do we know that?
I'm not sure that any, any of the contractors, I mean, the contractor, the general on the line work is out of Chesapeake.
Gaskin Brothers.
And then the pump station contractor is Yorktown, Williamsburg area as far as where their, where their headquarters.
Isn't that unfortunate?
One issue was, is a bond issue for a lot of contractors.
Small guys.
A lot of your bigger companies, Precon, Biko, Hickerson Buchanan, they all lost their bond capacity. So Gaskin Brothers is actually Preston Fossil's son. It's a spin-off where he was able to get the bond and capacity to get the job, so.
It's bonded for 100%. So I mean, they had to basically get a $10 million bond for this project. The impact on services, I mean, you have this in front of you, but basically, all the services are being maintained. They still have access to mail, to buses, garbage collection, all of those. HRT is having to make some modification to their route and they are communicating with their customer base. We've been working with them since last summer. They've been well-informed of the progress. The only exception is there will, because when a block is closed, there will not be bulk trash pickup during that period. They'll still have regular trash collection, but we will not be able to provide bulk service because we can't get the trucks down there. And we have notified those affected areas that there will be a temporary suspension of bulk, but their regular trash service will be on its normal, normal schedule. So Aaron's pretty much already talked about this as far as the notifications and the things that we've done. But basically, she's going to finish up as far as where we're at currently and what folks can expect in the coming weeks.
And just to touch on the trash thing again, we've actually gone to the length that you only have to take it to where you usually take it and the contractor's going to take it to either end of the street.
Oh, that's good.
So that, and he'll bring it back. So it's, I mean, we're really trying to minimize the effect it has on day-to-day. This is actually a picture of the excavation that was performed this past weekend at the intersection of Effingham and County. So you can see the size of the pipe. That's the HRT Force Main. It's about 44 inches in diameter. So we've got some big pipe that we're dealing with out here.
Old, too.
Like I said, Phase One construction will be completed February 22nd. They are on schedule. Right now, the installation of the water line is complete and they are doing testing today on it for Department of Health. The services plan to be switched next week. We're about 50% complete in Phase One, installing the force main that comes out of the pump station and down to Effingham. About 80% of the gravity line is done. The storm drain, which is located at this intersection, will be completed next week. When we are done in this phase, this will be open. There will be temporary paving here and then striping. So artisans will have parking in Phase One and Phase 11. So you can come off of High Street, come down, and then turn down Court. Phase 10 will still be under construction. An updated newsletter is going to go out in the next week or so to let people know that we're wrapping up Phase One and we're going to move on to Phase Two.
So again, we are doing our best to be responsive again, in the context of such a major job. And again, just to reiterate, this isn't just a stock photo. This is what we're dealing with. And just so you can just sort of understand the scope, we're dealing with some large diameter pipe and some significant depths. And it's not easy construction, especially in an old urban downtown environment. These are our contacts. We have a good team. Draper Aiden's the design engineer, Andy Snyder. Paul Bagden is our resident project inspector. Aaron's the project manager for utilities. So all of their contact information is on. The information that we distribute to the residents and businesses so they can contact any of them with any issues as far as, that they may have, and we can respond. So if you have any additional questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Did we do anything with this contract as far as small women-owned businesses or minority businesses as far as?
In the bid specs, it is encouraged, but there is not an actual specific requirement or percentage requirement.
We need to look at that future, contracts of this size.
Twelve.
And for a city as diverse as ours, we need to make sure that the participation is appropriate. Last thing to Dr. Edman's point about the equipment. I just wanted, for full disclosure, Gaskin Brothers is going to be storing a lot of the equipment on the site of the former Vision Center owned by Zion Baptist Church over there. So if you see your fencing going up and around there, you've probably seen them sitting some stuff up there already. That's what's going to be happening there. They're going to be storing a lot of equipment there. So it won't be in the way of, on the weekends or whatever. So, and at night, they'll be storing it there. And it's been cleared, the site has been cleared by the planning department with all the proper regulations. And I've been assured that if they don't abide by them, they're going to be appropriately taken care of.
To the Vice Mayor's point about the question on SWAM though, you know, whenever you use the word encourage, it doesn't carry a lot of weight.
Mandatory.
A project of this magnitude doesn't come along very often.
That's right.
There got to be a lot of jobs involved in a project of that size. So I think we need to do more than encourage. I agree, it needs to be mandatory.
I've got that on the list.
I think unless we, unless we take this whole diversity study seriously and put it in place and have guidelines, we're going to continue to ask these questions after the job is done, after the process is over and use words like encourage. And that's one of the things that the disparity study would bring and put in place. And they would actually, somebody working with you that's an expert in that area to make sure that we identify those people. But until we set that in place, we're just going to be asking and doing what we're doing. So that's another 11 million going out the door.
Simon, why don't we do the study?
Why don't you do a study and find out? There you go.
I got it.
That's right.
The total job, all four quadrants, what's the total? Do you have that rough? And how long is it going to take?
Let us get that for you so that we're-
I don't have it. It's substantial. I mean, you look back at just the geographic area. This is only 25%, of the whole study area. So, and if we get into Old Town and go there, that's going to be even more complicated and probably expensive working in that area. So there's still, there's still quite a bit of work to be done. And, you know, it's taken two years to get this done. And so you just sort of multiply that. If we just kept marching on, you're still probably talking about another seven, eight, 10 years to get through that whole, all the rest of it.
No, all four.
All four.
Average about two years.
Yeah.
Is that our plan on just keep on one phase after another?
Correct.
All right.
And this, these are really great questions. You guys are, and ladies are really good.
That's right.
And as you think of things even beyond tonight's meeting, don't hesitate to call anybody on this contact list. We're not going to stand on ceremony. We want to make sure that we make adjustments as we go forward. I'm really proud of the team. I mean, they're really good. They're on top of this. They know their stuff. They, it's a vertical-type team, too. They're talking with James in traffic engineering in the sign shop. There's, you know, when we bid and specify that the contractor put a sign up, if we want to go beyond that, and we're really thinking about doing that, we'll make the sign ourselves to make sure that the project is, has the least disruption on both residential and commercial life downtown.
I think there's another component that we ought to be able to tie in with skills for students that are in our schools who may be interested in some training in it. We ought to be able to make that some way tied in with it so we can have some jobs for them, too.
These are all good. And-
I did think of one question.
Yes, sir.
I called you from Washington DC on the gas line. And you're supposed to be getting back with me on that, right?
And that's a-
And she brought it up when you talked about your liaison folks there. That there were a couple of cities that had some major explosions underground and they did not know. That they didn't know where the gas lines were, how old they were, where the shut-off valves were. And there were several mayors that incurred quite a bit of damage in their city. And it actually enlightened everybody in the room. I actually called him sitting at the table. He did the standard manager, "I'll get back with you." I think it was Saturday.
And we implemented it. I called him that day.
That's right.
And we're, we're working, I'm sorry, I can't give you an answer at the moment of, to, but that is something that we're working on and that involves not just utilities, but engineering. And we have, you know, we have that relationship with Columbia Gas, you know, as evidenced by the fact that they're out there working with us. A, they're, of course, they're watching after their own facilities. But then when we run into a conflict, they're Johnny on the spot to help resolve that so we can keep moving with our construction.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your questions.
I like you.
Thanks. The last item is just a very brief report. This is actually going to tip off a larger briefing at your next council meeting. And this is on the possibility of the city issuing pension obligation bonds. Remember, we have two closed Portsmouth retirement systems. And again, remember the two major components of a retirement system, assets, which is your cash, liabilities, and that's the benefits that you're paying both now and in the future. For every dollar of liability, you need a dollar's worth of cash. We have a dollar's worth of liability on one plan and 28 cents worth of cash. And on the other plan, 32 cents worth of cash. Any bad year in the future could wipe us out. I mean, literally. And that's not hyperbole. Since we last talked about this on 8th January, we've had the actuarial report come back. If we don't do something, a bad year in investments could sink the plans. Second, if we don't do anything, we're going to run out of cash. And so the way to infuse this with cash, to move it from 28 cents and 32 cents to 80 cents, is to consider the possibility of issuing pension obligation bonds. So after that meeting that we had with you on the 8th of January, we started work the very next day. We've met with the retirement board. We met with our financial advisors. We've raised a whole bunch of questions which we're working the answers for. And we'll bring this back to you at the next meeting.
And all the risks associated now.
Yes, sir.
The pension obligation bond.
Exactly.
Some risks and things that we need to be keenly aware of if we go down that road.
And this would offer some hope to the folk that come here meeting after meeting that there might be a possibility of us helping out in some way with their social security offset.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And that's a very good point. I'm glad you brought that up.
The benefit of that is getting the $150 million now, putting it in, getting us at 80% and being able to rectify those issues. But then what are the risks with borrowing and carrying that much debt? What does it do to our borrowing capacity? One, what does it do for our rating going forward when we're going to go out in two years for a large tranche of money back on the borrowing market? And three, what are the risks associated with that? And those are the things that I think we all ought to make sure that we're clearly aware of and our eyes are wide open as we go into this next meeting. So, and that's why I bring that up. Because there's a real plus, but there could be a potential real negative.
The reason I suggest that because maybe now's the time that we can start, not just letting these folk go home with not knowing which direction, just to let them know that we are working on some of these things.
Seriously working on a resolution that was unanimously passed in 2009.
What money do we have in two years, the bonds? You said we have to go get a large?
Yeah, we just went this time around and got about $8 million, I think, or 16 million, was it? And eight of it might have been for the courthouse And eight of it might have been for the courthouse, and then another eight for refinancing and all, but I think 20, is it 14 or 16 when we go back for the larger tranche?
Well, we have...
Forty million.
We're putting the capital improvements program together for the next five years, so you'll see what our capital needs are soon, and, for example, we have payments still to make on the courthouse bonds to issue on that, so we will have to be, be going back to the bond market. We want to take advantage though, the important thing is that interest rates are at all-time low.
Money as cheap as you can get.
We got, yeah, we, we had interest rates at 281, 2.81%, and 2.75%. Remember, we advanced refund some bonds, and then we issued new bonds, and in that process, we're way below 3%.
And we saved 1.2 million dollars doing that this time around.
There've been some recent municipal obligation bonds issued, and one issued sold at 3.49%. So that, that's cheap money, and we are in that unique situation...
Unique situation, yeah.
...that the interest rates were. The hurdle rate that you see in those questions is the rate that you got to make so that you don't lose money.
Lose money.
And so, if we can issue bonds for 3.5%, we need to make at least 3.5% in our investment.
Our investment, yeah.
That's the hurdle rate.
And the risk we've had in the last few years and seeing where we've gone has gone down, have a couple of them with this pension obligation bond, and we won't be here.
And see, the risk gets larger if the interest rate that you have to pay the bond buyer, and that's what happened in Oakland, when Oakland was the first city, Oakland, California, to issue bonds like this. But they issued at a time when the interest rates were higher, and so consequently, they had to pay more than 3.5%. And then when they issued the bonds, they hit a bad market in their investments. Even though they had a bad first experience, they came back and issued bonds again, they issued bonds most recently within the last couple of years. So there, it, there is risk, and we need to understand the risk, but we have one of those once-in-a-blue-moon opportunity with interest rates being really low.
Yeah, there are financial advisors that'll tell you, two years ago, they would never recommend this, never, and the last 15 years, up to two years ago, and some of those same people are now saying, that might be something you need to look into, so there's a little risky in that when you get an advisor, personal or whatever, telling you, no, don't do this, don't do this, and then he calls you and say, let's do this. But they all change their models and thinking as well, and with money being as cheap as it is, it, you know, it may be a go, but we, like I say, we need to know all the risks. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just want Councilwoman Simmons and Councilman Edman's comment about the social security offset to get lost in the conversation. To Councilwoman Simmons is, she just pointed out that that resolution goes back to 2010, I believe, May of 2010. And even if we don't eat the elephant all at one time, we could draw the line to keep additional people from having to endure that while, while we eat the elephant at a bite at a time.
A bite at a time, that's right.
But you're better off biting it now because of cheap money, getting the 150 million now and making that whole thing go away.
I would support that.
And it's in the plan, I mean, that would...
Look at points number 11 and 12 in the two-page herb that follows. One is capitalize in principal interest so that we get more cash upfront to put in the plan, and you made the right decision on moving to eliminate the social security offset, absolutely.
Just timing, when you get it done.
I think that with this concept of doing the pension obligation bonds, we have a chance to make that a reality, number one. Number two, we are already working on the matter of the, the federal law change to give a variety, based on your birth year, of retirement years, 65, 66, 67. We're working on language to amend the city code so that we track that, as we told you at the last meeting, so that, that's in train too.
Good.
We want to be able to address the needs of all 95,000 people in, in the city and not just focus on the several hundred people that are in this plan, and we think we can do that, and let us go address those big quality of life issues that we need. This is really important.
That's the positive piece of this, that we can address a lot of those issues, whether it's debt, building rec centers, the money is cheap right now, if you don't go get it now, if you wait two years and say, yeah, let's go build one of these, you're going to be paying twice as much for it, so inflation and all of those things, so now's the time to strike with all of this, but again, we look forward to that next week. Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir, are there any council liaison reports this evening?
Well, we had two, I think Elizabeth and myself, with, but they were covered here with Brandon, so I'll forego mine, is you good to?
I mean, I sent mine, I emailed everybody, I thought, and everybody knows that.
But we did have a great day at the local government's day, the manager and I went up and we spent the entire day, met all of our delegation and talked through a lot of these issues that we just had here, so it was, it was a great day.
Okay, council members, you have a motion for closing?
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purposes: One, consideration of appointments to city boards and commissions as permitted under subsection A1; and two, consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose in the Sugar Hill section of the city as permitted under subsection A3.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Edman?
Yes.
Ms. Camique?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in closed session, thank you.